Okay. Are you ready to stand for the pledge? All right, start the meeting.
The pledge is that the United States of America is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Teresa Santiago.
Robert Wiggie.
Bullet shot.
And Craig Wagner. Okay, first on the agenda, we have a new century film site plan review, pre-application. How you doing?
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members on board, Mr. Dean. Before our engineer, Ryan, Mr. Ryan Finanzer, gave us details, let me give a few warm-up comment.
Can you just say your name for the record?
Oh, Peter Wade from New Century.
Right there.
Since we just had a conditional approval and we don't come back, so we want to give you why we're here, you know, so let me give you a few minutes. Yeah. It has been a pleasant but a very challenging five years for all of us in New Century. It's pleasant because through our hard-working, a rundown facility, you know, dusted pearl has gained its new life. Meanwhile, we have made many local friends through our events and activities such as Moon Festival, Family Festival, Deer Park Market, Flower Show, weddings, and so on. It's also very challenging, mainly due to the financial results of one of the major investors, you know, completely cut off by the Chinese government. We have tried our best to pay full property tax to the county and the town every year since day one. To continue to do so, we have to make it sustainable business and make profit. So far, we're not there yet. The limited revenue that we had from market, events, and facility rental is just a drop in the bucket. Nevertheless, thanks to the support of the state, county, and the town government, Empire State Development, New York Film Office, Orange County Partnership, as well as all the people in the town, the community, excuse me, we have survived, made some progress, determined to work harder towards a better future ahead. Now, let's come to our main business, Film and TV Production Center. As pointed out by some comment in the last public hearing, so far, we haven't built a, you know, professional soundstage yet. We're just using the current qualified production facility to do the shooting. Which major, you know, reason again is the financial resource is lacking. To do a larger endeavor like that, we need money. As you may know or may not, for a typical film crew to do productions in a film studio, the first thing a producer will consider is the lodging and food, the cost. For an average film production, the number of crew members can be easily over dozens, hundreds, or, you know, several hundreds. It can take days or months to shoot a major film, so hotel, food could be a major cost issue. As we talked with different producers and directors, if we have enough hotel rooms on site, then this could be a very, very attractive site. As you see from the Times Herald record, two articles in this will be Hollywood list in this Mid-Hudson area, but we are one of the element, but we need to make a very, you know, accommodating. As I heard from many producers and directors, since movie shooting usually takes long hours, the crew can be very stressful, so this 80% of the time, if you can make their stomach happy, they are in general very happy. So that's why the reason we will have a restaurant, restaurants coming in the, right up in the lot. We also heard a lot of great feedback, especially food, including people working in this building about our food. That's why we want to, under B1, we just approved, do a test around restaurant, but if that's success, then we will build more. So I heard from people coming one hour away, coming to our weekend market just for some, you know, bubble tea or salt fried chicken, something like that. We understand and appreciate the town planning board and building department, as well as most of the local people, they are very supportive of our previous effort. To further develop, we need money first. Fortunately, recently, we have new investors who are willing to take this adventure together with us. However, their first priority is also speed, particularly in the permit application and approval process. As we all know in business, timing is the key, but the time is not the money. As we put in the application for the funding from the state, we said we will do a production center for film and TV, we are checking for investment, and we will make this a place like for community revitalization and a unique living and working place. I think for those promise, we deliver. That's why probably we got, 2019, you got the ESD representative to a public hearing on our behalf. We, as seen from recently checked, the goals and objectives, Town Deer Park Comprehensive Plan, we are actually for the common goal, you know, for the, therefore, we hope the town can give us some kind, same kind of support and blessings as always. Together, we will make this community a even better place to live, work, and play. Thank you. Then we have here is Mr. Ryan Finanzer, he will be a civil engineer to represent us for the site plan application, other people from the engineering form, Mr. Bruce Stein, our architect. If you have any questions, you can come to that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Peter. Like you said, my name is Ryan Felonzer with Felonzer Engineering. I've got Joe Brunnen with me as well from our office. Thank you for the introduction, and it's a pleasure to be here in front of the board, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So as Peter mentioned, kind of his outlook and vision for the site, I left you copies of our site plans, so you can kind of follow along. You'll see that we have a key table here identifying the various buildings, most of which are existing, so there's only a couple of new structures that are being proposed, one being the restaurant identified as B4. And I, totally makes sense to me, because if you've ever had Peter's cooking, he's very good at authentic Chinese food, so I understand the restaurant angle. B1, as Peter had previously mentioned, was already conditionally approved, so that's a hotel slash restaurant, so that is staying as is. You have existing residences, those are the A1 and A2. B2, as under the current multipurpose use, we're going to propose a film studio for this area as well as a screening hall, and the screening hall will have up to 1,300 seats. B3 will be the hotel, and there's actually an existing underground shooting range at this property, which we would like to utilize, so that's also being proposed. And you see two new structures in the lower left-hand corner of your map, those will also be film studios in support of the whole site, the film studio industry that they're pursuing. Item D, we have allocated space for water and sewer, the space will be for sewer, so we are anticipating using a package treatment plant. Our current estimate is 40,000 gallons per day average. We are actually working with Delaware Engineering on this project as consultants, sub-consultants, they are actually handling the entire wastewater treatment facility design and getting DC Speedy's permit and application and approval, so they'll be handling that. We will also be handling the public water supply as well, so we have existing wells, some are shown on here, but there's three existing wells, one in front of the residences, we have one right in front of the corner of the multipurpose building, and one on the, right behind the existing barn, so we'll look at doing a full treatment, utilizing their onsite wells, and that'll be a Department of Health application as well and approval. We did preliminary parking calculations, which are also on the plan, so aside from the film studios and the restaurant being new structures, what's changing on the say obviously would be an addition of all the parking to handle the anticipated parking for the various uses on site. So we have a total required of 808 right now, and provided, shown on the plan as you see it, is 892. So we're over the minimum of that, what we need. And I understand this is a pre-application meeting, so we wanted to introduce this project, get it in front of you, and get any feedback that you may have, so we can prepare ourselves and get you the right information to make a formal application. And with that, I'll turn it back to the board.
All right, I just got a question. So C1 and C2 are new proposed buildings.
That, that's correct.
And then B3 is the shooting range, that's going to be, the use is going to change for that.
We all, yes, so the B3 is, the actual structure above ground is going to be hotel, the shooting range is, as I understand, a subterranean, low-ground, indoor, concrete shooting range.
Okay.
So we're not requesting any variances for the site, we feel this all falls under the existing multipurpose use for the property.
Okay.
But you are correct. C3 are new buildings.
B2 was the film studio building, so that's now going to change to a theater.
It's going to be screening hall, so for the films, as well as film studio, so we'll keep that.
Okay. And then B1, that's going to stay the same use?
Right, so they were previously approved conditionally for that use, that's going to maintain that.
And B4 will be for, yeah, that's a conditional building.
Restaurants, restaurant, yep.
The parking areas back, we got close to almost 900 parking areas.
That's correct.
That's going to be that slanted hill going down towards.
Right, so it's going to be on the riverside of the property, on the backside, keeping most of the parking out of the front yard.
Now, how is that going to help?
Yeah, so we'll, once we get.
Like a, it's all going to be paved, what?
Oh, correct, so we're anticipating your standard asphalt pavement at this point.
But a tiered event or?
Yep, it'll be tiered, following the topography as best we can, we'll look at, you know, our max slopes, we'll want to keep it 2% for ADA, and we'll go from there, but yeah, we need to grade that to keep it within ADA requirements, we will, but it'll be a tiered, mostly following the topo.
The movie theater, is that for screening just for the films, or is that going to be like charged admission to the public, like a regular movie theater?
So I may defer that one to Peter, but I believe this is screening of the films that you are producing.
Either 200 seats, that's a lot for a screen.
Yeah, actually, I have visited Universal Studios and also Time Warner Studios, something like that, one is a pretty old, but it's a big one, the other is pretty new, two, like 10 years ago. Both have that, because as you know, the film production, the production part, the whole production part is only half the cost, the other half is the marketing to sell the tickets. So before that, we need to get ideas of how it, large screen, how it looks like, this is for major purpose, but when it's built, even in the future, we definitely want this, you know, for our own usage, also for the, you know, open, it's a public, it's a public thing.
So you were going to like.
It seems to me you didn't answer the question. The question is, are you intending to show movies that are made and distributed by other companies, or just your own?
Uh, no, that's, that part mostly our own, our own movies.
Okay, so you just said mostly, so is it your own, other movies, or both? Listen, I'm not saying that you keep, nobody here is saying that you can't do whatever it is that you want to do yet, right? This is a pre-app, so we need the information so that we can tell you, or to your consultants, what they have to do next.
Let's see, in our mind, right now, it's our own movies, right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
We've had this discussion before, and I actually had it with your attorney before the meeting opened. With this proposal, there is no more right now. You need to propose what you want on this property. Okay? There's no more, well, we want a restaurant, and then six months later, we want a restaurant and a hotel, and then four months later, we want a shooting range. You need to identify whatever it is that you want on this property, because we are going to do, my recommendation to the board, and I suspect the engineers as well, and I don't think there's going to be any pushback, because we're going to do a full environmental review. Whether that means positive declaration, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, and I didn't stay in a hotel six or a holiday in a dress. Okay? What the bottom line of it is, that this is, if for no other reason than because of almost 900 parking spaces being paved. I don't know what the impact that has on water in that area, because there's a river right below it, we know that, right? It may be no impact because there's a river right below it. Like I said, I'm not an engineer, but we're going to do and require an environmental review for the entire plan. And I, as much as I can appreciate, well, we think it's going to be for our own movies, but it might be for others, then just say that now, so that we can make you plan for that, even if it ends up that it's only your own movies. I'm not trying to be, I'm really not trying to.
It's trying to make it be as broad as possible, so that you don't trap yourself into just your own movies. There's a possibility down the road, you might need economically to show other movies, say it now.
Okay, let's see.
That's, that's basically what I'm asking you to do.
To keep it broad.
Yeah, I think.
Okay, because you need to plan for kind of your, your potential use, not just what you see today.
Absolutely. Okay, sure, yeah, so.
So it could be a little of both.
Yeah.
The idea is that they're going to screen their movies, but I guess there could come a time where they would show other movies for the public.
Yeah. What is the capacity of the restaurants, if they were constructed as planned, what would be the full seating for the restaurant?
So we have a 900 square foot restaurant, 18 spaces for that, the square footage I have, maybe very much. So let's see, B4, 15,500 square foot, that's the whole footprint of the building.
What does that translate into customers, maximum customers?
Is it 500 seats?
We have 500 seats on that.
Yeah, 500.
Where's the figure? 500 seats?
Correct.
So you could have 500 people eating and 1,300 people in the theater at one time?
Potentially, but that's a situation that likely may not occur, that's everyone.
They're not telling me it won't.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. So yes, you are correct in that sense.
Are you still planning to do the festival or vendor thing that you got approval for?
Yes. But now the, you know, we did the weekend Deer Park Market for a year, that's eventually from 100 people to 50 people, to 20 people, so we are, for that one, right now, we are not planning to do, you know, further more, but at the Moon Festival, once a year, that's mass gathering, we'll do that.
Oh, and that's, and that's fine, that's separate?
Yeah.
And that's gathering permit is something completely different, that's fine.
Yeah, we're not planning to do that.
You're not doing the flea market anymore?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, the weekend market, maybe just like, you see, some of you might, I'm seeing that, just in the building one, just in the front yard, 10 booths, that, as I said, not successful, you know, people coming less and less, so we haven't done that for two or three years.
Okay, I understand that it wasn't particularly successful, but I'm just going to identify that if you're going to do it, it needs to be on the plan. Even if it's only, even if it's for only 10 or 20, or 25 vendors, whatever it might be, your engineer needs to know, I didn't think, listen, the way that you've got this drawn out, doesn't look like it's going to be on your septic area or leach field or anything like that. It may require some extra parking spaces, but frankly, with 900 parking spaces, I would doubt it, but again, I'm not an engineer, but if you're going to, in other words, if it's not on the plan, I want to be really clear, if it's not on the plan, you can't do it.
Well, actually.
Once you get the approval, if it's not on the plan, you can't do it. The exception to that would be the Moon Festival, because that's a mass gathering permit, that's a little bit.
So this, this part, actually, I'm not quite clear to answer the question. We have a, I think, one, two, three, the third one is a conditional proof, the site plan. My question is that, are these, are the previous three plans have to be all reflect on this plan, or they are different?
If you intend to continue those other uses, they have to be on this.
On this plan.
Because, because we're going to have to consider those uses with regard to the environmental impact on the whole, on all uses.
For that, can we make notes?
Yes.
Talk with the team, management, and then we come back.
That's why this is a pre-app.
Yeah.
That's why, that's exactly why I'm at death by an association. Okay?
Yeah, we'll come up with an answer next meeting, next meeting.
At the next meeting, you're going to have to pay the escrow, pay the financing fee, all those kinds of.
Yep.
So, so Glenn, you were saying everything should be incorporated on the map as opposed to referencing prior approvals on the note?
Absolutely, I mean, even if, even if, for example, you wanted to have a separate sheet that had this diagram, but, but had like a balloon that said flea market, and then you've got a separate sheet that says flea market, alternate Saturdays, 20 vendor maximum, this is where it's going to be, parking will be accommodated on this other, whatever it might be, it's all got to be in one submission, so that we're reviewing everything. We've talked about segmentation, in terms of this, actually, this particular property, we've been asking, I told Mr. Wilson this earlier this evening, we've been asking forever, or what is it that you really want to do on the property, tell us everything, so we can review everything. His indication to me, and hopefully it's accurate, is this application will ultimately be everything. So yeah, it's all got to be part in this application.
I don't know how many times you said that, and we've said that, just tell us what you want to do.
Every time they come.
And if this is it, and this is it, you do it, you do it.
Which is, which is, which is why I had the response, when he said, well, maybe it's this movie, maybe it's that, right? Tell us what you want to do, nobody is saying no, but we need to know so that we can evaluate it.
Because this very well may have an impact on prior approvals, this approval may modify.
As far as I'm concerned, if this application becomes formalized, in anything resembling this form, those other approvals are gone. Again, I don't know the impact that this will have on those, so, but it would be a consideration.
Yeah, we understand that, and we'll regroup and make sure that we run appropriate uses and future aspirations for the property on the plan.
Yes, just want to make one more comment, is that two or three years ago, yeah, exactly, you had these questions, two or three years ago, we want to give you, as we said, whatever in our mind, we let you know, even the first time, we want to have some restaurant, hotel room in third building, we didn't see that, but some of the things, if we sit, set at the moment, and then three years ago, now it's kind of, we're not telling the truth, because it's not in our mind, and things change, yeah.
Peter, understand something, I am not suggesting for a moment that three, five, nine years ago, when you, I don't know when you first bought the property, but I'm not suggesting that when you first bought the property, you had any concept that this is what you were going to want to do, but throughout your ownership of the property, I have asked you to try to open your mind, envision the maximum potential use, so that we could review it environmentally, to make sure that, you know, my job is to protect the town, you have your consultants to protect you, my job is to protect the planning board and the town at Deer Park, and that's Mr. Busco's job as well. So that's why we've been asking you to do this. I've been trying to prevent segmentation where, you know, well, okay, we're using this part of the property for this, so that's this analysis, and then this is a different analysis. It's one piece of dirt, it's one section of property, we need to evaluate the whole thing. So if you've got prior approvals and you want to continue those uses, get them in as part of this application. You can reference that they have been previously approved, and you may be able to use some of that old engineering, I have no idea, but it all needs to be in this submission, so that we're looking at as close to a full picture as possible.
Understood, point taken, Mr. Plotsky, thank you.
Sure. So what's, what's the next step?
Well, the next step would be for, I guess, you guys have meeting, figure out exactly what it is that you want to do, and then come in with a more formal presentation and plan, and then we can start talking about, because once, with some advance, mode ass and whatnot, the engineers will be able, our engineer will be able to tell us whether and what type of environmental would be likely required. I'm confident when I say, I don't think it's going to be a short form EAF, you know, I don't know that it will be a positive declaration either, it may just be a long form EAF, not an engineer, but basically, that would be the next step, come in with that additional information, so that we can say, okay, this is how we're going to proceed with regard to the global review, and perhaps more particularly, the environmental review, and then we can kind of go from there. Great. Amanda has an escrow sheet that has the amounts for the engineer and the attorney. Peter, you will have to sign it, and provide a check at some point, and then once we have that, and your plan's ready, with sufficient notice, you come in with me.
So any comments with the board? You, Mr. Busco.
Yes.
Any comments?
I do, a lot of Glenn says mostly, but, you know, we need, we need to put on it, and for sure, you know, Ryan and Felonzer will be able to accommodate this, is, you know, show an existing plan, number one, what's there today, show a, what was previously approved, might be another sheet, and then add onto it, you know, new proposals, just to make it, you know, very, very clear. You know, you do have some accommodations under the old plan, that were, the last plan was submitted, you know, water sewer, so obviously, those are going to have to be updated accordingly. You may want to consider whether you're moving forward with the initial plan, and then wait a while to back up to the second one, or, or not, that's what you're going to have to decide.
Correct, yeah, we intend to get you all that information on our next application.
Good. But, you know, basically, I think we need to see a, or a detailed plan or concept, that we understand it. Glenn's point is rotation, if you think you're going to want a helicopter pad there, tow us down, or whatever it is.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if you got really famous stars, you're going to want that.
Well, right for a screen, Top Gun III, hopefully, when this is done, you know, we'll want time to come and.
That's, that's what Glenn was shooting for, you're going to have Top Gun in the movies.
Understood.
But that's basically it, you know, we're a long ways left. Glenn's point of all that painting, though, is even with the river there, it's a, not one more drop can come off that property than came off it initially. You have stormwater pollution prevention plan, you know, Ryan and Amador is one of the ones going in there, so.
Yep, and we, I mentioned, that would be part of our scope of work, so that'd be included.
That's, that's really it. You were a good one.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for FYI, the commercial entrance that you have on 200, that was a problem with the state, just, it wasn't a problem with us, I don't think, but.
So I think the one you're referring to is actually an emergency entrance.
Yeah, they wouldn't let them put it, like, I don't know why, but they didn't want, just FYI, they didn't seem too happy about using that as a nice wraparound entrance.
Gotcha.
I'm sure you'll be consulting with you.
I, I'm sure.
I'll go for it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have missing lanes, 107 Route 209, pre-app.
All right, thank you for listening to us, my name is Gus, I work for Mr. Shaw, everybody looking for recording, ask him. He's having his old shit going. We had a concept with missing lanes, we always could sell, we'd be talking to Ray, the owner, you know, Mr. Wilson died outside, and looking at the concrete slab, we thought that maybe we could make it into a storage unit type facility, utilizing storage containers. And the reason being is, you wish the slab is there, we could use that. Storage containers are a good way to go, because they're fireproof, according to the rest of nature, and also, they're very strong and durable. We don't want to get into a bunch of digging and all this other stuff, basically, we're gonna be solar lighting, solar streetlights, ten thousand lumen, and then each unit will have a solar panel, have a light inside, and pretty much, we're just gonna stack them around in a symmetrical way, paint it one color, so they're not outstanding, and they look nice, and put a fence up for some lighting, and then rent them out. We're gonna rent them, we're gonna sell them, we'll have a forklift there and move. The only reason we're here today is, is there any reason that any of you see where that would not be viable?
So, I unfortunately have to, well, two things, first of all, I'm not related to this property, but I have met with both Gus and Mr. Shaw previously, with regards to completely unrelated matters. In looking at the zoning map, although Missing Lanes was there, and that clearly was commercial use, it appears that this may be in the NR zone. There's actually kind of an argument about it, because the supervisor has a recollection of essentially 209 the entire quarter, even changed HMU. The map does not reflect that, and according to Amanda, after a pretty thorough review, neither do the minutes. So, this may be in the NR zone, and then it'll be a question whether or not it's even a permitted use.
Well, I have a copy of the.
I believe it's Boeing.
It burned down over a year ago, so there'd be no grandfather of any type in terms of considering. I have a copy of the property record from basically the Orange County GIS, where I get my information, they're listing the site as a commercial one.
That's nice, Deer Park doesn't have a commercial one zone.
I'm just saying.
No, no, no.
I'm counting the same.
I understand that the county listed anyway it wants, we don't have a commercial one.
And they're also setting it as 330 vacant commercial. And that's just according to the GIS where I get my information, because that's what the people are being packed up on.
Correct. Probably, I don't, so, not, that's above my pay grade. My responsibility is to tell the board.
I understand.
That earlier this evening, it was brought to my attention, that this may not be in the HMU or.
Would this be appropriate then to go to ZBA now, to make that determination? We certainly can't, even you, if you have a question about.
Well, I have, I have to research it.
Right.
I just found that about it at ten to seven.
Right, okay, so.
So, what I would suggest is, if the applicant wishes, I'd be happy to suggest that we have a second pre-app, and before the second pre-app, I can at least verify what the zone is. If, in fact, it's not in a zone that would be favorable for the applicant's proposed or desired use, certainly, they could go to ZBA and request a use variance, somewhat of a heavy lift, but they could go to the ZBA and say, look, this is what the property was used for before, it's always been commercial in nature, why shouldn't they continue that way?
I guess my question was, who makes the, you make the determination of the zone, given the maps and minutes, the ZBA wouldn't make the determination of what zone this is in, correct?
Agreed.
Yeah, okay, that was my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I wasn't going beyond that for variance and so.
Sorry, but the answer is, could it go to, it could go to the ZBA, depending upon what I find out. I just have to have the opportunity to go through the town board minutes, when they last discussed zoning, and see kind of what they did and why.
So, if you go two directions, then you have to either possibly reference to the zones, or the steps that you mentioned, or if it was able to be put there, would they, this, would they have to provide a site plan, certain that process, would they have a site plan?
I just wanted the town to understand that we could not be doing construction, we would not be building a structure, there would not be a brick and mortar structure. It's basically, it's just gonna be a structure that's made out of a bunch of containers, circling each other in one color, with the uniform, and using solar power to control the whole thing, like, comes to lights and things like that. We're gonna put a couple dumpsters in there, and because there's nobody living there, we're gonna put a couple forty jobs there, because that's all that's necessary. The only thing that we do there are the containers and forklifts to move them around. Our purpose is to buy and sell containers, and at the same time, rent them out to people, because they're a lot cheaper than the other storage units out there today. Tax-wise, I don't know how that's gonna work, because these storage containers are self-contained and sitting underground, they're not considered structures, so I don't know what benefit it would be to you to actually even grant us this, because you won't be inflicting any tax, unless the town enact some sort of a rental tax, like Petzmannia has, we present on anything rental, and that way, you could make your money off the rental as we go.
Actually, the bigger concern is whether or not it's legal to have a container for storage in the town of Deer Park.
Well, according to your zoning, you had it listed twice, your zoning.
Okay, if it's legal, it's legal, I'm just, I haven't, wasn't aware of your application, and therefore, I didn't do any of the research.
No, I understand.
No, you're saying storage units, arguably, you can put up storage units in the town. The, the, the storage containers need to be investigated.
Storage containers are basically.
Wait, we've had issues where we violated people with using the storage containers for the business.
Correct. And I see that in your zoning, where if they're gonna have it in storage for one of their businesses, they have to have a surrounding fence or something up, I understand that, that's not what we're doing.
Well, we'll investigate it, but it poses problems.
So Glenn, if you're kind enough to let them come back with another's before they file, when you review the zoning, and they come back with another preliminary plan, that's okay with you?
Yeah, I think, frankly, I think that's appropriate.
That's kind, that's fine, fair, that's fair.
And another reason for going for the storage containers and building, building storage units, building storage units are not as secure as storage containers, they just aren't, they're made out of thicker metal, the, I have it here someplace, the walls are fourteen gauge, and, who was it? Oh, the Coast Guard, nineteen seventies, had performed a chain of tests, research for the repeated four test of membranes, concluded that a fire inside a container, regardless of clothes, will not affect very much harm on the container, question certainly not on adjacent containers, and then they say, except, don't hide anyone if there's a fire, when they said that. But, they're just a more sturdy type of unit, and they're safer, and by not using a normal electric unit, and using the solar energy, we have less chance of something catching on fire, having something come up. That was one of the reasons.
So, do you want to, I guess we have to schedule.
You guys have to check the process, do I come back, hopefully you can give me more suggestions, how to go forward, this or that, we can go forward.
Do you have contact information to be shown?
I do not.
So Gus, if you could provide your contact information to Amanda, she'll be able to let you know when we've got the information, so that you can come back.
Yeah, and the other good thing about this, of course, it's storage, you won't have a bunch of people hanging around and all that other stuff, you're gonna come in and draw their graphic, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Three, four, five, two, seven, L, one, three, eight, Gus, two, one, two, three, E, E, R, E. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Marion subdivision, everything drive.
So, Mr. Distract, Chairman, Marion subdivision was on the agenda for written submission?
Yes.
I believe Ms. Gore indicated that she's received a number of written submissions, some of which were circulated to the board earlier today, some of which she received at a time when they couldn't be circulated. I note that almost all of them have the same verbiage, which is, request that it be read at the meeting. That is a request that you do not need to abide by, it's completely up to the discretion of the board, you should, however, identify the nature of the communications, the person who sent it, and the time and date, so that if anybody checks the minutes, they can see that in fact, the various things were received and placed into the record, and then be distributed to the board, and at an appropriate point in the future, there could be a discussion by the board as to approval and other moving forward type issues.
Okay.
I do, I do want to indicate to the board that, subsequent to the last meeting, I'm trying to find the particular map that I was given, only because it's highlighted and makes it very, very clear, there are.
Do you have your map from Marion subdivision?
Just a quick, we got some.
Well, I've got a whole.
Here's where it's.
Is that the most recent? Sure, and they want to follow me over, you gentlemen may want to come up with one as well.
So, this is, this is the proposed note, and this is Christopher Street. This is a separate lot owned by somebody else, this is a separate lot owned by somebody else. This little square here, and this, which is P O Lot 12, are both part of Mrs. Marion's parent parcel, that she intends to keep. The concern is that we're not sure who maintains the grass, because that's all that's there on these two pieces, but if you look at it, it almost implies that it's creating two, we'd call them landlocked, two sub.
Two-sloped.
They're not even working lots. They're not, because they're really part of the parent parcel. In any event, in order to, this one's not barbed, because at least it's kind of connected to Lot 12, this one's, I mean, this is where it actually connected to the parent parcel, for us, never seen drive, but now, that's gonna be subdivided off, so the only thing it can connect to is this lot way up here, it, it, it's difficult. So, I have suggested to Mr. Fuller that he speak to the proposed developer and/or Mrs. Marion, to see if these two lots can be transferred in some fashion, either this way, or this way, or this way, in other words, so they become part of an adjacent lot, so that that way, everything on one side of Christopher Street is one thing, and everything on the other side of Christopher Street is another.
I'm here if you want me to answer that.
No, okay, Antonio. So, okay, so that's the concern, and I just identified it as, because it was raised to me by a town official.
Yeah, it was questionable, they wanted their lot, yeah, but if it connected, what can we do?
Well, the question is, the question is, does it connect?
Well, okay, well, I do have a question.
Technically, technically, it does, because we don't have natural subdivision, it's by rivers or rivers or something like that, so in theory, it does, but the concern is the maintenance of these two pieces, if they're not owned by somebody who's gonna care.
This line cannot be corrected, it should be like that, this sheel of the road.
Yes, yes, you're correct, this, that, that one black line probably shouldn't have.
Yeah.
So.
It's connected.
It is, it was connected, and, you know, they can make any shape they want.
But Glenn's point makes sense, and that's, that's up to the owner of.
Right, all I'm saying is, I identified it to Mr. Fuller as something that was of concern and raised to me, so he said that he would bring it up to Mr. Service if this happened.
Good.
Okay, so, and then you just have to do, as I said, in some fashion, accept the written comments, and then you post about the character.
Okay, I just gotta do more of you of the handwritten comments that came in, there was one from Donna Long, it was sent in Wednesday, June 22nd, today, six o'clock, it's in reference to the Marion subdivision, just with that in two minutes. And we have one from Donna Gore, it's a Wednesday, June 22nd, five fifty to five P M, and it was a reference again to the Marion subdivision. Another letter, Michael F. Gould, and it was us, submitted in Wednesday, June 22nd, four fifty-nine P M, and it's also a reference to Marion subdivision. We have another letter from Donna Long, sent Wednesday, June 22nd, four fifty-four P M, and again, it's in reference to Marion subdivision. We have another letter submitted by Grace Moore, and it was on Wednesday, June 22nd, two P M, and it's a reference to the Marion subdivision. Here from, it was to be Mary Uno's, and it was submitted on Tuesday, June 21st, ten thirty, five P M, and again, it's a reference to. Well, I can see it looks as, for the Marion subdivision. And again, we have a Brenda Blair, submitted on Wednesday, June 22nd, at twelve twenty P M, and again, this is a reference to the Marion subdivision, if anyone had any activities into the minutes. And at this point, these are the letters that we have received, at this point, someone may take motion to close the public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. And yes. And you're covered. At this point, I don't think there's further action on the application.
That's correct, that's my opinion.
Could I, could I just ask mine, is, at this point, everything has been submitted to Orange County, or is that the next step, right, their review?
Well, no, they, they were, some, it was submitted to Orange County, it wasn't submitted to DOH, DOH won't review anything until they get preliminary approval, we haven't granted any kind of preliminary approval yet.
We haven't granted any kind of preliminary approval yet. I mean, that's my understanding based upon other planning board activities and applications. It's my experience that if we're at DOH, we'll do.
Correct.
A review, they require some sort of conditional approval, conditioned on their, except.
You have a super. These, these, um, if they would, to get, they would forward it to the applicant.
They won't be.
Thank you. Okay. You ready on the comments? Motion, two, three, four, five, minutes.
Two days.
Motion, five, six, seven, eight.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Kloski, are you in?
I, I do, actually. Maple Crest Solar, I had a conversation, I received some documentation. Their consultants giving an analysis of how much it would cost to disable, take apart, and remediate the property at the conclusion of solar use. Came up with an estimate of $106,216.50. I submitted an inquiry to our consultant as to a value for the decommissioning. He indicated that that was the same number, but that he would recommend adding $10,000 for various inspections, because of that. So, the applicant's counsel, and I think their bond counsel, contacted me. They went over the proposed decommissioning bond, as well as the decommissioning plan. And I expect that in the immediate future, I will receive a bond on behalf of the town of Deer Park in the amount of $125,000. That would give us about a $9,000 cushion on, above the estimates of the consultants. They didn't seem to object to that number at all. Once I have that, I will bring it to the board, so that the board can accept the bond number, and then lie, advise the, to the bond itself, and then Mr. McCreary will sign up. While Mr. McCreary, who's who, I don't know, who's in the meeting at that juncture, will sign off on that. But I just wanted to bring you up to date, to let you know that they are in fact in process and moving forward.
I ask a question about that. How far out do you anticipate the life expectancy of these? So, on the decommissioning, is this $12 amount based on now or 25 years from now?
20, 30 years, and there's a 2% hedge within their.
That's built in, 2%.
So, actually, it's interesting you asked that question, because as you know, as one of the conditions for getting a pilot, or for getting a solar approval, they have to enter into a pilot agreement, paying the minimum taxes. Pilot agreements by statute in New York State are 15 years long. Their decommissioning plan, they say, the anticipated life expectancy, for lack of a better term, is 30 years. So, that was a personal, I didn't receive 30. I had heard 20, I don't think I ever heard 30. So, I raised that as an issue for them. They say, "Just realize that in year 16, you may be in for a rude awakening when it comes to your tax form." So, we had a conversation about that. They are at least aware of that potentiality, but I, I think, based on what Mr. Busco said, what they, they said, I think the anticipation is, you know, upwards of 30 years. What I think is going to happen is that in the next 10 years, they're basically going to, they're, they'll, they'll go to the building department and say, "We want to take off all of our panels and put on new panels because it's a new generation, and we can do a whole lot of people." That would be my expectation. So, I think that the base, the basis will likely be there for a very long time without a lot of work being done to them. I suspect that solar panels themselves may be changed out as technology improves.
I'm just curious, this is all very new. Al, have you actually seen anything decommissioning at anywhere? To see how it actually going to work.
I've dropped, but I know how they do it. They, they actually explain it in their decommissioning plan, how they go about it, and it's really fairly easy, is that they, they take the panels off, they stack them, they get a forklift in, they load them onto a truck, you know, and they can do a thousand panels a day, you know. This is with some of the bigger, you know, units. Then they take those and, they take those and forklifts at a undisclosed site, you know, warehouse, wherever they take them. And then the rest of it is shown accordingly. But it's, it's laid out exactly how they do it, and how fast they can do it, what the time period is, and it's, you know, quite thorough play. So, I've not seen it because, you know, other than, I've seen it take off roofs, you know, sometimes, but not, I feel, there's still too many.
No, I was just wondering, if we're actually going to do it, or just walk away and say, you got to.
No, no, they'll do it. I mean, it's.
That is a very good question, and I'll let you know in about 20 years, if you either have a.
But that, that's, that's what the bond is for.
Why, is it a different pair of that?
Yeah, but that, you know, that, that's their, their money. It's tenant and, and the capital partners, they just go out and, you know, probably three prices, and, go ahead.
I don't want to hold you up, I'm just curious.
It, it's too, it's too new. Nobody would have put one up and taken it down on it, so it's impossible to say. I can tell you that every missed ballot requires the bond. That's all I have.
Any comments from town board?
Mr. Schott, I'm sure you.
I think the code, the storage, the high terms.
I'm called Dirk.
I'm not going to be.
Is Bosco, you have any comments?
I was just talking about, looking at previous, the storage units. I just went through the code, and just validated, because I know we've only allowed it for one year at home, you know, it's for construction or the house. Let's say you're building, or this, let's say this, you could use them one year, have one unit there, develop these storage units, while, you know, to put their tools in there. And then at the end of one year, the company.
Yeah, it seems that the storage containers that they're talking about using are more for, I'm going to say, individual use or contractor use while sometimes being built. I don't believe our code provides for those usage.
They're technically talking about shipping containers.
Right, shipping.
In shipping.
Yeah, they're shipping.
Made for shipping.
Yeah.
But not as bad as.
Now, the other, it's ironic that this came out. I, or, that other community, and they asked if how other communities regulate that. It was just like a week ago, other communities asked me. And I told them, well, varies, some allow it, some don't, but usually it's limited. And up in this community, it's prohibited. And we had one fellow that wanted to do it, and he gave us a plan, and he built a building around it, which, okay, because you weren't seeing it, you know, it was inside the building. You built a barn, put this thing in a barn.
Okay.
Yep.
And it's taxed. Makes everybody happy, sort of, in that sense.
Well, it's just one hive, but, you know, it's, you know, it's, 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 it's weird. It's a unique idea, I have to give that. Now, there was another municipality I had, that a real estate architect wanted to take them and build an apartment complex, and stack them, and like you were saying, stack them, and cut them, and this, and that, and the other, and we sent them to the state of New York. No. But you could do it with modulators, you know, like modulators, you know, modular building, you could do it, but not, and they ultimately did it with modulators. The state sent it down to the storage containers, shipping containers, being used to make a building. And it was an interesting concept. I'm sure somewhere in the country, it's not.
Yeah.
Somewhere in Arizona.
There's one in Ewan.
What's that?
There's one in Ewan.
Is there?
I, I, I was, I was going to, like, six or eight.
All right. Motion to vote.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Yes. Yes.
Yeah.